Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the December 5, 2017 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees. I appreciate your patience for us, our tardiness. We have returned from executive session, our first executive session, where we were able to begin some discussion on student appeals. We were not able to complete that discussion or other items that we have listed. So at this time, before we get into our regular agenda, the Chair would entertain a motion to amend the current agenda to include a second executive session. And if we could get the full motion on that, Dr. Caution Parker?
I recommend that we move the executive session items to our second executive session.
Thank you. Great. Okay, thank you. Motion made by Dr. Caution Parker, second by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? Hearing number will take it to a vote. Hand vote, if you would. Motion passes seven zero. And part of our tardiness came from including being over here next door at our R2I2 showcase, and it was a real privilege to be able to spend some time in meeting with them. It's been a little bit of a whirlwind running around, but it's neat to see the things from Apple app design to solar panels being worked on and used, as well as 3D printing using Katia software that can do prosthetic hands and violin. So it was really impressive, and I once again appreciate your patience for starting just a little late. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and move to our first item on the agenda, which is going to be the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Approximately six weeks ago, I attended Richland Two's summer lunch program, Thank You Luncheon. There, I met many individuals and groups throughout our community who donate their time, talent, and treasure to the Richland Two School District. Today, Dr. Benjamin Dixon of Columbia Gives is going to share with us what he and his fellow members of Columbia Gives do for Richland Two and the Columbia community. Dr. Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank Ms. Agostina for allowing us, Cola Gives, to present to you this evening. I know you don't have a lot of time, so I will go quickly through the information, and there will be some printed materials that you will be receiving. Cola Gives is a giving circle, I think the first African-American giving circle in Columbia and perhaps in South Carolina. We were established in 2013, and we are a nonprofit organization which focuses on the community. We have specific activities and projects that we engage in. We are a nonprofit organization that does not send out applications for grants. We go around the community, we take a look, we see what's going on, and we like to focus on those nonprofit organizations that don't get the airtime or some of the services that we provide. We are affiliated with a national organization of giving circles, and we continue to provide material to the community. You will find a lot of our projects described on the website, W.W. W. Cola Gives. Anything about our values and our mission, you can find there. We consider ourselves as philanthropists. Yes, we are not rich, not famous, but we're philanthropists. We give of our talent and our service and our treasure. Some of the projects that we've engaged in over the past four years involved not only local organizations, but also international projects. One, the slide at the top, shows the Merciful Hearts Foundation, which is actually in Ghana, where we provided blankets and head caps for newborn babies. The other projects in the local area are listed here on the screen, and you will see that in the handout that you will receive later. The one that's most recent is the work with the South Carolina Helping Project for the Puerto Rican disaster. We try to leverage the assets of our group and those who donate to us to give back to the community in three ways: talent, time, and treasure; technical assistance, individual and collective action, and also unsolicited grants that we give out periodically. Richland Two is the beneficiary of our efforts. We have done annually a Christmas Dinner Baskets project. This is serving families who are in need, identified by the Social Work Department in the district. And we do this every year. We have served 145 individuals and 32 families along the way. We also have provided this service to Richland One as well, where we served 80 families, 80 persons. In Richland Two, we have other projects that we participated in. The Red Nose Backpack Project was done about a year ago, the Children's Book Project, and most recent, as mentioned earlier, the Summer Project Feeding Program, where some people from our organization share their information, their talent, and help the students understand how things grow and how to take care of their teeth. So this is what Cola Gives does, and this is your inspirational moment. We are so happy to be here, and please take a look at our information. And for you and anybody in the audience, yes, we do take donations to continue our work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. Now please join me as RNE, Richland Northeast, presents the colors, and it will be presented by the NJROTC of Richland Northeast. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands,
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. We also want to thank the JROTC from Richland Northeast and also Dr. Dixon for the inspirational moment and the time, the charitable giving that you're giving back to Columbia. Appreciate that. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our next item, which is the approval of the agenda as amended. May I get a motion? And if I could, if I could get the actual motion repeated, Ms. Agostini, sorry about that.
That's a challenge. I move that we approve the new agenda as stated.
May I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Agostini, seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Hearing number will go ahead and vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item number five, our student focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our December student focus is San Lapa Elementary School. Ms. Linda Hall, Principal of San Lapa Elementary, and the school's student lighthouse team will highlight their Leader in Me program. San Lapa Elementary has been recognized as a Leader in Me lighthouse school, which is awarded by Franklin Covey, to honor the school's attainment of a well-rounded leadership model.
Hall?
Good evening, Chairman Plank, Dr. Davis, members of the Board of Trustees, executive staff, and all guests. San Lapa is so proud this evening to be able to showcase our fine school, and since we're all about student leadership, I'm going to turn it over to these wonderful students.
Good evening. Our team is here tonight to show you why we've been named a Franklin Covey Lighthouse School. We're not a lighthouse school by accident. It takes a lot of hard work and leadership. That's why we're a premier school in a premier district, period.
First of all, we wanted to share our leadership mission statement. Our mission statement was chosen by kids, and it's simple to remember: Leadership! Choose it! Own it! Live it!
Choose it because leadership is your choice, the best choice. Good character is all about making the right choices. Habit one, be proactive. We have to carry our own weather and sometimes make lemons into lemonade. Habit two, begin with the end in mind. We have to choose our path. No one else can choose it for us. And some leadership is all about doing the right thing when no one's looking.
Own it. Teachers don't just give us grades, we earn them. Habit three is put first things first. That means we should do our homework before playing video games. We have to own the outcome. The seven habits help us discover our inner leader. Teachers, parents, and the community give us opportunities to take advantage of what's right there for us.
Live it. Leadership and the seven habits are not just at school. They are so important for our whole lives. We can improve our lives and create a better culture for our school, our home, and our community. A big part of living leadership is celebrating and finding joy all around us. Habit number seven is strap in the sock. That reminds us to take care of our bodies, minds, hearts, and souls.
Every student has at least one leadership role, whether it's in the classroom, school, or both. We have to select the role we're interested in, then must apply for it. After we apply and are selected for that role, we must work really hard to carry it out.
All of us in Student Lighthouse had to apply and be selected. Now we have to work really hard to promote the seven habits and leadership. We have to speak to the student body and to groups like you.
Everybody in kindergarten through fifth grade has a club of their choice, whether it's bucket brigade, yoga, or track. In all these clubs, we use habit five: see first to understand, then to be understood. Means not only listen with your eyes, but your ears and your heart.
One of our responsibilities as a Student Lighthouse team is to give back to the community in some way. Two years ago, with the 1,000-year flood, San Lapa collected many different items that flood victims needed. Last year, Student Lighthouse led a blanket drive to provide warmth for those in need. This year, we're already very busy with Diversity Awareness Day and Veterans Day. We're also planning a project called Helping Hands to assist the school in Puerto Rico with hurricane relief.
Back to habit two: begin with the end in mind. Being a lighthouse school is not about character and culture. That's important, but after all, we tend to school to learn. My goal is to go from 4A's to all A's this school year. My personal goal is to leave my mark on the school. We set goals everywhere, all the time. Every kid in our school knows how to set a goal.
X to Y by win.
We all have wigs wildly important goals, whether they're in your grade, your school, grade level, classroom, and our own leadership notebooks. At all times, we have a personal and an academic wig that we're working on, and it really helps to have accountability partners. We team up with the class at least two years apart from us, and it's amazing what we can learn from each other.
Our school-wide wig this year is about improving our writing behaviors. We track this in our leadership notebooks, and we also have our school-wide data wall. The best part is when we meet our goals, we celebrate. We celebrate with things like dance parties and bubbles. We share with our parents in student-led conferences.
We always talk about the seven habits, but there are really eight. Habit number eight, finding our voice. We hope that we've been able to use our voices tonight to show you why we feel we are a part of a premier school, and all of us are a part of a premier school district, period.
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Agostini.
I just want to make a comment. Mrs. Hall, that is how much I love her school, but the leadership that's acted is really paying off. Thank you all for coming and presenting. You did a wonderful job, and we look forward to all of you, just for the future years.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Just want to say thank you guys so much, and I can tell you're truly going places because you've already chosen it, you own it, and you just lived it today. So thank you so much for all that you did.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Questions, comments? Well, there's an acronym that I use from time to time, it's called ABCASH. It's always be confident and always stay humble, and you guys just exuded confidence. Just want to thank you so much for that. You were strong, your delivery was great. And the always be humble part, I just want to take a moment here to recognize Ms. Linda Hall for her years of service, 36 years as an educator, all in Richland Two. And I know this is a special evening for you to be able to highlight your students because you'll be retiring at the end of this year. And so the last 12 have been at San Lapa since it began, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I attended one of the Lighthouse leadership, Leader in Me, when you guys had the Leader in Me Lighthouse status, first in the district, so, or one of the events. So I'm really proud of all your work, and it really shows here. So thank you so much for your years of service and your commitment to our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
At this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda, it looks like it just updated, so as is. And I know you guys are hearing me ask to repeat the motion. Let me explain that. Forgive me for just throwing it on you tonight, but we, in order to execute the full motion, if you would, just with your motion, go ahead and give the full motion with that, just so that we can actually have it play out in its full motion, for the record, please. Okay, motion made by Ms. Mackey. May I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I fully second Ms. Mackey's elaborated motion for the approval of our consent agenda.
I could count on Mr. Manning. Thank you for your second, and thank you for elaborating so detail. I don't need the elaboration on the second. All right, without any discussion, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item number seven, 7.1, the legislative update. Ms. Mackey.
Dr. Miley, I welcome you to come forward, although I'm not sure that we will have extensive comments tonight with regard to the legislative update. In order to be respectful of everyone's time and not to unduly report, yeah, still come forward, just in case you want to say something, but you don't have to. Yeah, there's a lot that's in limbo, is not the right word, but there's a lot that's going on right now, but South Carolina legislative body will reconvene on January 9, 2018, which is about the time of our next school board meeting, so not a whole lot. They won't have any committee meetings that we'll have met until then. And there's a tax reform bill that's underway right now in Washington, and that's going to directly and indirectly affect our bottom line, our budget, and our appropriations. And so we're waiting to see what's going to happen with that, see what the fallout will be, the benefits will be, and so in respect of time, we won't have an elaborate report at this time unless you want to add something to that, Dr. Miley.
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mackey. All right, at this time, we'll move to our first public participation. It does look like we have an individual signed up. Chris Harden, if you would approach the podium. Thank you, Mr. Harden. I will go ahead and run through some of the guidelines for public participation. The first is that the meeting is recorded and will be available on YouTube and can be viewed. You'll have three minutes to present, and just for your knowledge, we as a board will not be responding to you directly. However, someone in the district will be reaching out to you. And then please refrain from using specific references to school personnel or students. And you've already activated your microphone. If you would, state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Chris Harden. I live at 10 Markham Court, Columbia 29229.
Okay. You may address.
Okay. My name is Chris Harden. My wife of nearly 19 years is Tracy Harden. I served this community for 20 years as a doctor of veterinary medicine before selling my practice and retiring. Our son is a freshman at Ridgeview High School and has always attended Richland Two schools. I am deeply invested in this community and care very much about our students and their futures. For the last few months, the civics team at Village Church of Lythwood has attended these school board meetings. It has been an enlightening experience for me, but I am not here at this podium representing Village Church or its pastor. The opinions I express today are my own as a citizen and voter. I am confident, though, that there are tens of thousands of other voters in Richland County who feel as I do. A few moments ago, we all stood with our hands over our hearts and declared our allegiance to one nation under God. There has been a long, disturbing trend, though, especially along the West Coast of New England, for schools to embrace what God hates, and to teach godlessness and immoral behavior is normal. That darkness is coming soon to pressure you, the gatekeepers of our children's education. That same God we all just declared that our nation was under will not bless teaching darkness to our children. I'm aware of Supreme Court opinions rendered in years prior to my birth that tie your hands to this day. That does not mean, however, that the void that has occurred when God was expelled from schools has to be filled with darkness and perversion. Members of the board and appointed officers, please have courage to stand against this trend. An ancient prophet warned, "Woe to them who call evil good and good evil, who substitute darkness for light and light for darkness." I implore you to humbly and earnestly seek God's wisdom in all of your decisions. Be a salt for our children's minds, salt which preserves and resists decay. God will bless you individually and corporately for doing so. The faith community is large and strong and well-funded and willing to defend this district for taking a stand for what is right and moral. Certain groups will pressure you with threatened litigation or in other ways to compromise this community's moral values. Do not compromise when you are pressured to allow moral corruption to be heralded as normal and to further expel morality from our schools. Be courageous in 2018 and beyond. Have a Merry Christmas as we celebrate the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. At this time, if there is anyone else who may not have signed up but would like to address the board, please come forward now. And if you would, start by pressing the microphone. And again, if I may, I'll just reiterate the parameters. The meeting is recorded and available on YouTube. You will have three minutes to present and will not be responding to you directly, but you can expect someone from the district to reach out to you. Refrain from using specific references to school personnel or students. And then if you would, start by stating your name and your address for the public record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Diana Addison. My address is 1027 Raven Pond Drive, Columbia 29223. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns of some policies of Richland School District Two as concerned parent. There was a recent incident that took place at Richland Northeast. My daughter was a victim of such incident, and it brought up a lot of concerns as far as an infraction policy that is used from the district for the Chromebooks that are given to the students. The incident that took place dealt with cyberbullying, sexual harassing messages, life-threatening messages that turned from three victims as of November 8 that was reported, that wound up to a total of 17 victims as of November 21, with an additional two, which of those two parents, two victims would be parents, one is including myself. My concerns are the follow-up procedures that were taken, that were not taken in regards to this policy. I was addressed at a meeting that we were so kindly to have with the administration at RNE. In regards to the concerns that we had, it was admitted that follow-up was not taken, as I felt it should have been with the serious issues that were occurring, and I would like to recommend that additional training would take place if it's not already been discussed in regards to this issue, because you are dealing with 17 children who were victimized. And not only were those 17 children victimized, but it affects their family as well. And I know this from firsthand, it's not close to the home, but it actually, like I mentioned before, happened in the home. The first thing I asked when I went into the school was for the Title IX Coordinator that I know deals with sexual harassment, sexual violence, and I was addressed as being told that we are not a Title IX school. And from my research, I understand that any federally funded school is, should be, a Title IX school. So that was also another concern, for giving wrong information, and like I said, this had to do with sexual harassment. I would also like to address any educational programs, whether it's an after-school program that I honestly would be willing to help with, that would deal with addressing these kids in cyberbullying, sexual harassment, or harassment of any kind of nature. One of the children involved started experiencing this as of October 31, which brings on another great concern that these children are not speaking. When they went to administration on November 8, it was passed on like it's no big deal, it's probably somebody in the school, and it was not followed up on. So these are my issues today. With 95% of these kids witnessing cyberbullying and not reporting, it is a great concern. So I do thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns today, and as I mentioned before, I will be willing to help with anything that can be done.
Thank you, Ms. Addison. Thank you so much. At this time, we will entertain anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Yes, sir.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good evening. The one reminder is just the three minutes and that it will be videoed and available on YouTube. And if you'd start with your name and address, please, thank you.
I'm Robert Andrews. I live at 113 Firethorn Lane, Columbia, South Carolina 29223. And my concerns is also as far as with the sexual harassment and the cyberbullying, what type of technology have y'all put into place or thought about putting in place in the protection of the children? Because I too was a victim, and my daughter was a victim as well. She attends RNE as well. And my main concern is the decimation of information. The school knew about it, November 8, administration did nothing about it, and Columbine, Sadie Hook, Virginia Tech, they had no warning, even though... about it. And Columbine, Sadie Hook, Virginia Tech, they had no warning, even though Richland Northeast had plenty of ample enough warning for the parents. Nothing was told or said or to anybody, anything. So my concern is the decimation of information getting out to the parents, because like I said, these other schools didn't have no warning. Granted, thank God, nothing went the other way, but two weeks is way too long when it comes to child safety and human trafficking. South Carolina is like in the top ten in the country. So we definitely need, me personally, I would like to have some type of assurance that my child's safety will be taken care of when she's not in my custody. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, thank you very much for your concerns and for taking the time to talk to us today. Okay, we will now move on to item number nine. And Ms. Sherman, I see on number nine, we've got nine point two, public participation. So what we're going to do, these items will be moved until after the second executive session. And so, Ms. Sherman, if you could move then public participation to where it would fall on the agenda. Okay, since we had already amended the agenda for the change and moving to second agenda, these voting items will resume after the second executive session. At this time, we'll move on to item number ten, which is ten point one, the appointment of the South Carolina School Board Association Region Eight Director. At this point, this is, let me take a little moment to explain this. This is the former Region Eight Director, Jamie Devine, has been elected as the South Carolina School Boards Association Secretary, which leaves a seat as the Region Eight Director vacant. The South Carolina School Board Association President Wesley Hightower will be appointing a Richland two board member to fill that seat until the delegation assembly in December two thousand eighteen. This would be the delegation assembly that Ms. Mackey referred to earlier in her legislative update. The South Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors will approve the appointment at its next meeting, January twentieth. We have been asked to provide and nominate a board member, too, as Director of Region Eight. This time, I would entertain a motion regarding this.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Craig Plank for the South Carolina School Board Association Region Eight Director.
Okay, motion is made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing them, we'll now vote. And motion fails four to three. And Dr. Elkins Johnson, I appreciate the nomination. I do. Thank you very much. At this time, since the motion failed, may I get another motion for?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Amelia Mackey for the position of the Region Eight Director for the South Carolina School Boards Association.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Manning. May I get a second?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that motion made by Mr. Manning to nominate Ms. Amelia Mackey for Region Eight Director. Was that elaborate or not?
I appreciate the specific second there. I knew I was going to live this one down. Just trying to keep order. Trying to keep procedure. All right, so it's been motion made by Mr. Manning, seconded elaborately by Mr. Shad. May any discussion? Hearing them, we'll now vote. Motion passes six one. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we are now going to move into item number eleven, old business action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have before the board, and Dr. Franklin is here to answer any questions, asking for approval of the following policy revisions. We have policy CH, which is policy implementation, CHA slash CHB, development of administrative rules, CHD, administration in absence of policy, and CM, school district annual reports.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion to move approval of the policy revisions as outlined by Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I would like to go back and look at CHD, administration in absence of policy. Wanted to make a few revisions to that. If you guys can recall the incident that happened at one of our neighboring school districts where information was reported to the chair and the vice chair, and they failed to share that information with the entire board in a timely manner. So that just caused some friction with that. So I would love for us to go back just to revise that. And if we could just add, when you go to administration, we'll contact the board chair and vice chair. I would like for us to have something that says, well, let me just start from the beginning. Can you go to that policy? Can you pull that up? Is there any way we can pull that up? If not, Dr. Franklin, can you read what it says, and then I can make my amendment?
Sure. As printed, it says, "When a situation arises that is not covered by board policy and requires immediate attention, the superintendent will act to resolve the situation. The superintendent will report such actions to the chairperson or vice chairperson of the board as soon as practical. The superintendent will inform the board of such action and of the need for policy at its next meeting. In such cases, the superintendent's decisions will be temporary and subject to review by the board at its next meeting."
And I would like for it to say, and it says, "When a situation arises that is not covered by board policy and requires immediate attention, the superintendent will act to resolve the situation as soon as practical. The superintendent will report such actions to the chairperson or vice chair of the board, who will notify members of the board. The board will discuss the need for policy at its next meeting. In such cases, the superintendent's discussion will be temporary and subject to review by the board at its next meeting." And basically, as I stated before, there was an incident that occurred in the neighboring school district where the board chair and the vice chair failed to inform the entire board members in a timely manner. I think it took them over a month. And our policy says the same thing. And what I would like for our policy really to say is to go back that when the board chair and the chair received this information, that they will immediately share it with the entire school board before any decisions are made, basically.
Okay. And Dr. Elkins Johnson, are you making that as a motion, an amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. So if you would, if you would just use the language to make a motion for the record, please, with your amendment.
So just go back and read it over again?
Well.
And I send, they do have a original copy.
Yeah.
Dr. Davis, do you want to?
Here's what I would propose, if possible. We have four policies for approval.
Yes.
Is it possible to have it, where we pull this one out so we can get it and get the language and see the language? And is there any question as the other three?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion to pull the policy? Is it CHD?
CHD, yes.
Pull that one out?
Do you need a second?
Or postpone it till the next meeting? I mean, at this point, I think we're going to need to have it looked at, and so why don't we pull this one out and have it voted on at the next one?
Sure.
At this point, then, if I could get a motion to pull CHD from the items with action requested.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pull CHD, have an opportunity to take a look at it, revise it, and then bring it back before the next board meeting.
Okay, motion made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Agostini. Any conversation or discussion? Hearing them, we'll vote on that. Okay, motion passes seven zero. All right, at this time, then, may I get a motion for old business action requested for the remaining three items? No, we're on, oh, we're on old business? Oh, forgive me. So on old business. No, okay. No, we're on old business.
We're on old business. We have to approve these.
Yeah, so we have pulled out the first, we've pulled out one of, I'm on the right one. So we pulled eleven ones. So we've pulled out CHD. So now I would need a motion for the remaining three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve policy CH, policy CHA, CHB, and policy CM.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Agostini. May I get a second? Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Okay, hearing them, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. And then, Dr. Franklin, then you'll bring back the other one for, okay, great. All right, we'll now move on to item number twelve, new business, no action requested. Again, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have for you tonight a proposal for the following policies, policy KLGA, school resource officers, and policy IKADD, credit recovery.
Okay.
I'm sorry, content and credit recovery.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Dr. Franklin?
Ms.
Ms. Mackey, and then Ms. Agostini.
Just a question for clarification. With regard to credit recovery, the student ends up, the end result is that the student, if successfully, upon completion of the credit recovery, will pass the class, get credit for the class, but their GPA won't be altered right. I want to make sure that I understand. Credit recovery just means that you get credit for that class, but it doesn't change your GPA. So the grade remains the same, but you get credit for that class?
I'm going to read that straight from the UGP for you.
Okay.
It says, "If the student passes the credit recovery course with a sixty or higher, the passing grade will be transcribed as the numeric grade equivalent to the GPA quality points of the student's cumulative GPA at the time they complete the credit recovery course. If the student's cumulative GPA is an F, then the grade entered for passing the credit recovery course is the lowest passing grade of sixty. The credit recovery course will be identified with a CR in the course title and recorded as such in the student's transcript."
So it's just a mechanism to provide credit for the class?
It is, just credit for the class, because students have the opportunity to retake an entire course.
And for their GPA to reflect as such, the new grade. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Ms. Agostini.
Mr. Chair, I just, could you give us a brief example of how the credit recovery actually works when you're saying that it's a portion of a class?
In fact, I've asked Dr. Hefner, is Hefner is here from Lethwood High School. We work closely with the high school principals so that we would have consistency across the district. And so I'll ask her to come up and address that for you.
Absolutely. Good evening. If we have students who score in the course between a fifty and a fifty-nine, they have the opportunity to take credit recovery. And when they take credit recovery, they take a diagnostic test that assesses where their weaknesses are within the course. And so then they have a prescribed curriculum from that learning platform that addresses those weaknesses. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Manning.
Thank you. Is the school resource officer's policy new?
Outside of my realm.
As cleave comes, both of these policies are updates from the School Boards Association based on new legislation or State Department regulations. So IKADD is new as well as KLGA. So they're both new policies.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So did we look, I know we, that's what I was thinking. I know we just redid our MOU with the Sheriff's Department, and there were a lot of roles delineated in that.
Yes, sir.
And I want to make sure that everywhere that we talk about, wherever that is, roles and responsibilities of the resource officers, that it aligns, that it all aligns. So if we have the MOU, and we have this policy, and we have any other document anywhere sitting on somebody's desk that talks about roles and responsibilities for our resource officers, that they all align and are together.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense?
It does. And this addresses one part of that, what you just said about the MOU.
Yeah.
As well as we looked at our MOU, and it does align with this policy.
So it's all in alignment?
Yes.
And these are the only two major documents that we have that talk about roles and responsibilities is the MOU and this policy?
Yes, sir.
For resource officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so anytime we make an update to one or the other, we'll make sure that we look at both at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Ms. Mackey.
As a follow-up question, I know that previously, one of the causes for a resource officer getting involved with a student would be disturbing schools. And I'm noticing that that language is not here. The only reason that, you know, there are several reasons that a resource officer can get involved, but most of them are because there is criminal activity. And it says here at the, my pages may very well be out of order. I think it's page one, the end of one, two, under jurisdiction, the very last sentence mentions, at the end of the first paragraph mentions, "Conduct presents an immediate safety risk." Is this something that's implemented by statute, or can we make revisions? I know it's come from the School Board Association. I'm wondering if it would be helpful to be specific and say poses a risk, a safety risk to oneself or others? Or do we need to, is this language that's, I know it's a recommendation from the School Board Association, but I'm thinking that we can modify if we so desire. But I'm thinking that we need to specify the safety risk needs to be to themselves or others, instead of just safety risk period. That's just my opinion. Here.
Do you think we just need to pull that out, Mr. Chair?
Well, at this point, this is not an action item.
Yeah, it's just a comment. I'm not asking to take action.
Just a comment for, that'll be brought before us after revisions.
And also with regard to these, yeah, it looks like there's some, there's some new language here. With regard to training, I think we've discussed this before, and I'm just asking to get it on the record. I'm assuming, or presuming, rather, that our administrators and are being trained and are advised, I know that they're getting a copy of the MOU from the school resource officers, from the Richland County Sheriff's Department, as stated here. But I presume that our administrators are also being trained with regard to this language and when to call a resource officer and things of that nature. And we've been told yes before. I'm just asking again to get it publicly on record.
Yes. Yes, we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Any other questions or comments regarding twelve point one? Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to twelve point two, which is going to be the report, comprehensive and annual financial report, ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to provide us with the comprehensive annual financial report ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. We have Dr. Harry Miley leading us with that report. Dr. Miley.
Thank you. This is, we refer to it as the audit, but this is the comprehensive financial, the CAFR, we do every year. I wanted to tell you that state law requires us to do this. It's due by state law to the State Department of Education by December first. Some schools get it in there pretty early. We have, we got ours in by December first. So that's the good news. I wanted to tell you that we I wanted to tell you that we got it in last Friday, and we printed them out today, so you have a copy on your desk. I wanted to also mention that without Shelley Allen and Penny De Neny and others in my office, this would not have gotten done on time. So I appreciate their hard, hard work and their dedication, and we have a great team. If you have any questions, we will be glad to answer them later, when you've had time to review the report. But to summarize the report, we have Matthew Hodges from the accounting firm of Burkett, Burkett, and Burkett, who has conducted our audit, and with that, he'll present his report. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis, thank you very much for your time this evening. I will be presenting a brief summary of your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. And first of all, I'd just like to introduce the members of our team. Our audit partner is Larry Montague. He oversaw your audits and approved issuance of our reports. I served as your audit manager overseeing all day-to-day activities, as well as the single audit. And Sam Hoffman oversaw the procurement audit. So I'm pleased to report that we received full cooperation from all personnel in performing our audits. The financial statements and note disclosures are fairly presented in accordance with US GAAP. There were no unrecorded misstatements, no adjusting journal entries as a result of our audit, and we encountered no significant difficulties whatsoever in performing our audits. Our audits followed generally accepted auditing standards, governmental auditing standards, as well as the requirements of the Uniform Guidance. We tested transactions based on our knowledge of the district and used professional judgment in determining sample sizes that are appropriate in the circumstances. Those have been designed to achieve reasonable but not absolute assurance as to the accuracy of the financial statements. And we did not note any instances of noncompliance with district policy. We have issued three clean opinions as a result of our audit. The first being an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves. The second being that there were no deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. And lastly, we issued an unmodified opinion in regards to compliance with the major federal awards. So Richland Two continues to be in excellent financial position due to foresight of you, the board, as well as your leadership. Your bond ratings, again, were very solid for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, and AA one rating for Moody's, as well as AA rating from Standard and Poor's. And you received the Certificates of Excellence in Financial Reporting from both GFOA and ASBO. These are prestigious awards that they do rigorous testing to make sure that your financial statements are in compliance with all professional standards. And you have received those awards for thirty consecutive years. So that is certainly to be commended, and based on the reports that we've issued this year, certainly see no reason why that won't move to thirty-one years in a row. So brief highlights from the report. Your general fund balance has increased again for the thirteenth year in a row. For fiscal year two thousand seventeen, that was an increase of five point nine million dollars. The general fund balance at June thirtieth stood at forty-six point two million dollars. And that represents seventeen point seven percent of your total operating budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, which is just above the range that's provided in board policy. So at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have or address any comments.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Manning.
Can you help me do the math, because I'm a little slow? So the seventeen point seven percent that were above the range of the preferred fund balance, so how much above that range are? What does that mean in dollars?
It's sixty, okay. In terms of dollars, I'm not exactly sure what that is.
About two and a half million dollars, maybe three million dollars.
So two and a half million over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
However, you need to remember that that was as of June thirtieth. We're in a new budget year. So if you compared our fund balance to our current budget, we're right about sixty and a half or so. Because as our budget grows, that fund balance also needs to grow to stay into that range. But we're above, we're slightly above the current sixteen and a half upper limit of the board policy.
So I don't have two and a half million dollars?
Next question?
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And Dr. Miley, if you would, for the benefit of our public, when we see a general fund balance of forty-six point two million dollars, there can be various thoughts that go into our constituents' minds, our taxpayers' minds, about what, why do we have this excess? If you could just, again, highlight how the cash flow element works into this and why that's prudent, and as well as what, how it affects our bonds. Thank you.
Well, and Matthew may want to add here, but again, that's not a savings account that we have separate in another bank somewhere. It's an accounting fund balance at the end of the year. Every month, depending on the revenue flow from the state and local governments and the outflow of our expenditures, that fund balance, that balance in our checking account could be well below that. At times of the year, some districts, it is below zero, and they have to go out and issue tax anticipation notes to make payroll. So that fund balance of forty-six million, again, it represents approximately two months of operating. So that's a cushion that, that's a lot of money in our case, because we're a big district and we spend a lot of money. But two months operating can get real nervous if the state is slow in transferring any funds, especially in the months of October, September, October, and November. There are a lot of districts that don't have that fund balance and have to go borrow money to make payroll and things like that.
And that does play into our bond rating as well, right?
Well, in fact, our last bond issue, our rating calls, every bond rating agency points to our fund balance as one of the positive indicators of our current bond rating.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I would direct the board, as you have a chance to go through this, I know we were given it tonight, then please direct those to Dr. Miley's office. Next up is twelve point three, which will be our report, Data Overview. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to provide us with our report on the data overview. We have Dr. John Arnold.
Thank you. Chairman Plank, Dr. Davis, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present this overview summary of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen student learning data. You'll remember from our data workshops in October and November, there are four types of data that educators should analyze to improve student outcomes. These data types are demographic, perception, process, and student learning. Tonight's presentation is going to focus on student learning. The student learning data that we will focus on this evening is measured by the tests used in our state's accountability system. Those tests include the South Carolina College and Career Ready, or SC Ready, South Carolina Palmetto Assessment of State Standards, or SC PASS, the End of Course Examinations, and the long one, Assessing Comprehension and Communication English State to State for English Language Learners, or ACCESS for Ls. Context is important when you're reviewing data, so throughout this presentation, you will see student learning comparing Richland Two to South Carolina. As you recall from our conversations during the more lengthy and detailed workshops, Richland Two's performance is above the state in some subjects and grade levels, while in others, we're slightly below the state. Following the presentation of the data, I will share with you some of the ways that we are using this data to improve student learning, and then answer any questions that you may have. We'll begin with SC Ready. SC Ready tests are administered to students in grades three through eight in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, and there are four performance levels. Does not meet expectations, approaches expectations, meets, and exceeds. This first chart shows a percent of elementary school students who scored at meets or exceeds expectations on the English Language Arts Test by grade level. On this chart and the following charts, the blue columns represent Richland Two, and the green columns represent South Carolina. This chart shows a percent of elementary school students, again, who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the mathematics test. Moving on to middle school, this chart shows a percent of middle school students who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the English Language Arts Test by grade level. And our final SC Ready chart shows a percent of middle school students who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the mathematics test. The South Carolina Palmetto Assessment of State Standards, or SCPASS, is given to students in grades four through eight and includes Science and Social Studies. Student results on SCPASS are reported on, as performance levels. The science test has the same performance levels that we saw for SC Ready, while Social Studies has only three levels, exemplary, met, and not met. Our first SCPASS chart shows a percent of elementary school students who scored meets or exceeds expectations by grade level on the science test. Moving to Social Studies, this chart shows a percent of elementary school students who scored met or exemplary on last year's test. This chart shows results for middle school, excuse me, middle school students on the SCPASS science test. And finally, this chart shows how our middle school students performed on the Social Studies test. The End of Course Tests are administered at the conclusion of what are called Gateway Courses. Currently, those courses include Algebra One, Biology One, English One, and United States History and Constitution. EOC scores are aligned to the ten-point South Carolina Uniform grading policy and count as twenty percent of the student's final course grade. We just have one chart for End of Course this evening. This chart shows a percent of students who pass the End of Course exam by subject. Passing is defined as receiving a score of seventy or higher. The last assessment is new for us, but it's now part of the state accountability system, is the Access Test. This test is an English language proficiency assessment taken by students identified as limited English proficient in kindergarten through grade twelve. It's composed of four subtests, includes listening, speaking, reading, and writing. These subtests are used to determine the student's composite score. The scores are numeric values, and they range from zero to six. Students must continue to take the Access Test until they have a composite score of a four point four with no subtest score of less than a four point zero. And this chart shows the performance of Richland Two students on each of the four subtests. The results are divided into elementary, middle, and high school levels. I mentioned earlier that context is important, but unfortunately, South Carolina Department of Education does not release publicly the information for access, so we're not able to make a comparison to state-level performance. So now that we've looked at our student learning data, or a portion of it, I'd like to share with you a summary of how we are using this data to inform and align instruction to improve student outcomes. First, we have continued the implementation of Data Era Five. As a reminder, Data Era Five focuses the district on using a variety of relevant data as a strategy for improvement and organizational effectiveness. Additionally, eleven schools are piloting the use of benchmark testing and the use of standards-based formative assessments. These schools administered benchmark exams at the conclusion of the first quarter. They have received the results and have begun using the data to inform and align instruction. Also, as a result of our partnership with the South Carolina Department of Education and our work with Jen Morrison, we have developed three tools to systematically assess and strengthen our data literate culture in the district. These include the Data Analysis Protocol, which you had the opportunity to use, the Data Literate Culture Inventory, and an audit, excuse me, assessment audit tool. The work that we are doing will serve as a model for South Carolina school districts and the use of data to improve student achievement. And finally, I would like to point out that all of these efforts are aligned to the results that we received on our recent Advanced Ed accreditation review. Although the improvement priority and the opportunity for improvement came from different domains, they are both related to the use of data to improve student learning. This concludes my presentation, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning?
First, I want to applaud the district's effort and continue to dive into data, the Data Era Five. We did meet as a board already and look at this data in a much deeper dive.
Yes, sir.
So I don't want anybody to view my lack of lots of comments and not ensuring the data. And Dr. Davis, I know you're working hard on this, but I do just want to comment on sort of the obvious issue that we still are struggling in our middle school area to meet the state, the state standards. And I say that not because, I know you're working very hard on it, but I just wanted to, I guess, just put on record that we're still struggling in that area. So continue to.
Yes, sir.
Focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Elkin Johnson.
Well, actually, that was going to be my comment, but my question is, what exactly are we doing at the middle schools? Because when you're looking at the ELA scores, we're only performing below the state average in sixth grade. And I know that's that transition year.
Yes, sir.
So what are we exactly doing to get those students on point? And again, in sixth, seventh, and eighth, we have some struggles in the math and science, social studies. So what are the schools doing? Are they providing early bird tutoring, or after-school tutoring, lunch tutoring? What are they actually providing? And even summer school, if you can elaborate on that for me, please?
Well, unfortunately, I would only be able to elaborate on how we're using the data. Just limitation of my responsibilities, but Nancy Gregory.
Yes, thank you. I was going to.
Has volunteered to come and address that for you.
Thank you.
As I address your questions on middle school, I want to start too, overall, with the big picture, with the demands of the state standards and through data. We've identified the needs for laser focus and alignment, teaching to the intent of the standards and the indicators, rolling out pacing guides in all our core content areas, and monitoring that rollout. Common district expectations across the board, I think many of you, Mr. Plank, have commented, and the posters you've seen in the schools, making sure we have those common practices, consistencies, and things, such as lesson plans. We have a new common district walkthrough tool to monitor alignment. And with that, we have started the regular reporting of walkthrough data at school and district levels. As Dr. Arnold mentioned, we have a benchmark pilot in eleven schools, but this really gives us the opportunity to see where we are. Because in middle school, we've only had MAP before we take SC Ready. And so we have an added emphasis with that with an item bank, an item pool, where teachers can actually construct short formative assessments and common assessments in between benchmarks that take into account rigor and alignment and pacing. We talked about Data Era Five, our work with Jen Morrison, and the tools. Specifically at middle school, we're in the second year of an initiative with SREB. That's the Southern Region Education Board. And we are primarily focused on literacy design, the literacy design collaborative, and the mathematics design collaborative. It is intensive PD with coaching, and you had asked about the other disciplines. The beauty of the LDC is. The beauty of the LDC is we work with teachers to build lessons that engage students in challenging texts across all disciplines.
Just one other question. Do we have this data separated by schools that we can get a copy of?
Yes, we do have that data by school.
I would love to get a copy per school.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Mackey.
Question with regard to slides, and thank you for compiling this data, and I appreciate you have the deep dive that we did have previously, and I'm assuming we will continue to have conversations and get progress updates. Question with regard to Slide 17, as it pertains to students who have limited English language proficiency. Is there a testing mechanism to determine a student's limited capacity in that regard, or do they self-identify as being English?
Students are identified based on a home language survey.
Okay.
If the parents indicate that English is not the primary language, or is a second language spoken in the home, then the students are given a screening assessment.
Okay.
And the results of that screening assessment will determine whether or not they qualify for services as a limited English proficient student.
That's what I need to know. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Mr. Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Arnold, what's the difference between proficiency and growth?
Proficiency is a one-time measure. For example, it's a snapshot. A student can achieve proficiency on this year's test, has nothing to do with how the student may have done last year or will do next year. Growth is a measure of change over time. So, growth would then look at the student from previous years, how they performed last year, for example, to how they performed this year, and whether or not there was an increase in their performance.
And could you tell us about the achievement gap?
The achievement gap in Richland, Louisiana II is something that certainly exists as it does around the state and around the nation. It's something that we are very aware of and something that we're working to address. I just recently had the opportunity to provide some data for Dr. Helen Grant, and I hadn't planned to share that this evening, but I-
I'm not asking you to.
Would just be happy to share with you that we do know that the demographics, each of the different demographics in Richland II, when compared to that similar demographic across the state, Richland II outperforms, our students outperform the similar demographics in the state averages.
Okay. And lastly, while it's great to have the data, which gives some measure of how our students are doing, and looking at the things that are being put in place and continuing to measure, could you give us in the public a realistic idea to see whether we are growing? Or if we're not doing so well, what would be the timeframe to measure that? Is it just year-to-year, or do you look at it over a span of three years, five years? How do we test to see whether we're doing better?
Certainly.
Now that we're diving more into the data?
That's an excellent question, and we have the ability typically to look back across multiple years so that we can decide, do we want to look at just a particular cohort and follow them across time, look at multiple cohorts going across several years? In order to do that, though, we have to have an assessment that has been in place and been in use on a regular basis. You probably recall that just a few years ago, South Carolina was administering the SE Pass across all subjects. Then we went to ASPIRE, we only did the ACT ASPIRE for one year. Then we moved into the SC Ready test, and we just completed our second administration, excuse me, third administration of SC Ready. So, we're just now at the point where we're getting consistent data using the same assessment to be able to look back over periods of time to be able to make those comparisons and determinations to see if there is, in fact, growth. Going forward, as we hopefully remain consistent with the assessments that we're using, that will certainly become something that develops a historical record for us to make those comparisons. If at any point the board would like some specific year-to-year, multi-year, I would be happy to provide it, just being aware of those limitations that we only have a few years at this point.
And I'm sorry, just a couple of things, because what you said sparked something else. If the goal line keeps getting moved by people above us, how can we fairly assess ourselves? There might be a, I'll just make that as a comment, I'm not going to put you on the spot.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Would you agree with me, though, in the great state that we live in, with the standards that are placed upon all districts, but of course, we're concerned about Richland II mostly, that we are, in comparison, our rigor is much more stronger than many states, many jurisdictions? So, now making a position, point, that because I believe our standards are so strong that it's a little unfair to compare us from state to state, given that they may have more lax or not as stringent or rigorous curriculum and testing methods?
Yes, sir, that is an excellent point. Again, NWEA, Northwest Evaluation Association, is a company that produces a test, the MAP assessment that's used nationwide. Couple of years ago, well, more than a couple, it's been several years ago, they did a, what would probably be best described as a bridging study, where they looked at the performance of students in different states who took the state assessments, but also took the MAP assessment. And that allowed them to make comparisons. How did the students do on their state assessment, and then how did they do on MAP, and then compare that to other states? And what we found, and again, this has been several years, but it was after we had moved from PACT to PASS, and we had increased the academic rigor, and yes, South Carolina's academic standards, again, it varies by grade level and subject, but we do have among the most rigorous standards in the nation. That is true.
Thank you so much, Dr. Arnold. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chad. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Arnold, for your work and your team as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 12.4, Update Strategic Planning Facilities. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To provide us with the update for the Strategic Planning Facilities report, we have Mr. Will Anderson, also AKA William Anderson. Although he looks like an imposter with his mustache. And to assist him if needed, we have Mr. Jack Carter. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, sir. I had some good walk-up music I wanted to play, Keith and I picked out, but Libby vetoed that, so a little CCR, but I'm here and glad to be here with you guys tonight. Thank you all for your time and good evening. Jack, Carter, and I are here to provide some information regarding our facilities and strategic planning for our facilities. So tonight, we want to first give you a little update on our current facilities, let you know that, so you have a better understanding of our facilities, and also be helpful in understanding as we move into the next school year, or I'm sorry, into January and February, we'll be coming to you with 8% funding. So you've got to kind of lay some groundwork on what to expect with that. We also want to talk about how we went about to get our feedback from our partners, wanting to make sure that's important for us, to our partners to understand our facilities and to get feedback from them, and so talk about that and the process we went through, and how we got the feedback, and then lastly, share some of the feedback results and the recap of those meetings. So, current facilities, as you all know, we have over 41 schools, centers, and other district facilities. If we're just talking about our schools, we have roughly 5.1 million square feet of facilities. If you start including our support service center, our district stadiums, athletic facilities, portables, which we have to maintain as well, we're talking close to 6 million square feet of facilities. So we are a large school district with a lot of square feet and a lot to maintain and keep up to date. This chart here kind of shows the age of our facilities. We have built a lot of schools in the last 20 years. You can see we have schools that in the last 20 years are 50% or more, but we've also have a lot of older schools. We have a quarter of our schools are 50 years or older. We have roughly 50% are 20 years or older. So we have some aging schools. Something to point out as well, and I'm not sure if my math is right, but Mr. Carter here has been responsible for building and opening 18 of these facilities, and this does not include the substantial renovations or additions and other things that would just double the number that he's been involved in. So, a lot of facilities and varying ages here. So how do we maintain all these facilities in these ages? You know, first thing is the people. We have a really tremendous staff of people who do phenomenal jobs. Mr. George Gooch and Mr. Luther Mack within our maintenance department and his team are excellent. As you guys may remember from the programming study, the architects that came, their first comment, and over and over again, was how well-maintained all of our facilities are. And you go to different districts, and you might not see these well-maintained facilities. So they do a great job. Also, our school staff, our custodial staff, our principals, our teachers, our ground crews, and others, they take pride in their facilities, and that's a really important thing. They try to keep those clean and take pride in what they do. So that plays a role, as we partner with our maintenance staff to keep our schools up to date. When we're thinking about what we do, this is kind of an order of how we maintain. We've got work orders for routine maintenance. You know, we've got something small, we put in a work order. It gets prioritized. Anything that's life and safety, that's going to impact teaching and learning, that's high priority. We're talking HVAC, plumbing, electrical, so that we are not missing any time in the classroom. So that takes high priority. The guys are out there on the weekends, 3:00 in the morning, they're making sure that class is happening, and so that takes priorities. When you start moving into things that are larger scale, things that may interrupt teaching and learning, we typically see that as 8% projects, projects that will take place in the summer. We're talking maybe some minor renovations to a media center, for example. We're talking flooring, painting, things that will take place during theirs. There's a little bit larger ticket items, usually about $5 million worth of projects, give or take, throughout the district, but those happen then. And then lastly, we, since the 1980s, really before, we didn't do any major renovations. We added new schools, but since the 1980s, we've started doing some major renovations or additions to facilities to help maintain those as well. For example, replacing Spring Valley or replacing Dent, you can consider those kind of, they were maintenance to address some schools that were just really old. So, that's a little very high-level ground of where we are facilities and how we kind of maintain them. But one missing piece is, you know, we have, as our new strategic plan and with Dr. Davis, we're all in this together with all of our partners. So we wanted to get some feedback from our partners. We wanted to make sure that our partners and community understand, you know, what our facilities and understand what we have going on, but also to get some feedback from them. So how we did this, we had five cluster meetings throughout the district. We did this around our high schools, we did this around in schools geographically close, elementary, middle schools, and centers. We're invited to these meetings. These meetings also, if you couldn't come to one, you could come to any, to come and listen about the district. We communicated these meetings through connected calls and emails, got reminders about these to all these parents for those schools, so these reminders went out and had people ready for these meetings. At the meetings, we had all executive staff and school principals' presence for that cluster that was there. Really appreciate executive staff and a couple of board members that came, some, but taking time out of five different times to come and provide feedback and answer questions, and those principals as well coming. Also, of course, really appreciate the effort of Libby Roof and her staff for all the work they did getting these calls out, Tony, Adam, and Brian for helping run the show and get all the communication out, a big help for them making sure that worked. So I appreciate their time and effort. So what do we do at these meetings? We basically had four parts. We did a brief presentation. Dr. Davis kind of started us off with the facility expectations to be a premier district. He talked about the strategic plan and the vision for the district and how we need facilities to support that vision. Whoops. I then went in to let everyone know about our growth expectations, and then discussed our current facility needs and things we need for a premier school district, shared the demography report, shared the recent information from the Central Midlands Council of Governments, and then went through this facility needs to meet those spaces, talked about what a, from the programming study, what kind of learning spaces we have, what are some of these big maintenance issues? You know, I asked at every meeting the question, you know, what does a roof cost on a building? And it was surprising to hear the answers from the $100,000 range to a lot, and something people didn't realize, like a roof for this building may cost upwards of $4 to $5 million, and that's just one roof. So, talked about all the technology, infrastructure, safety and security, athletics and arts. And the last section, part of that, was the feedback. So we broke into different sections. We broke into high school, middle school, elementary school, had the principals there, executive staff spread across. The ability for people to come and ask questions, provide us feedback verbally, and we also had Chromebooks set out throughout the room for people to take a brief survey, and we gathered information, and I'll share with you shortly. But we had a lot of people there. We had lots of great questions. Questions ranged from very specific about their school, we had some trends on some information, we had some people that asked stuff that had nothing to do with facilities, but we were there and ready to answer those questions as well and provide the feedback to them. So how we based our survey and based the information is around our guiding principles. If you remember back in September, when the architects from our programming study came, we developed these guiding principles as a way for our facilities moving forward. And we use these guiding principles as a baseline for questions we asked on the survey. And you can see those there, safe, secure, student-centered, et cetera. So we had over 200 people sign in to these meetings, but I'm pretty sure it's probably double that. I'm not sure everyone signed in. We had the most people from, the most attended meetings were Richland Northeast High School, the cluster Ridgeview High School, and the Blythewood meetings. We had not as many at Westwood and Spring Valley, but still had good crowds at those as well. We had over 115 people take the online survey, but we also got a lot of verbal feedback as well. The survey was not very long. We basically asked a few questions, and as I mentioned, asked them around those guiding principles. The first, one of the first question of a series of questions we asked was, we asked, "Please rate the importance of each of the following characteristics of a school facility." And it was a question of each guiding principle, so was that question tied to one of these guiding principles here? And we asked in the range from not important, somewhat important, to very important. All were ranked overwhelmingly very important, with personal pathways being at 63%, very important at the bottom spectrum, to safe and secure at 93% being very important, with the rest of the guiding principles as very important falling in between. Another question that we asked was, "Please rate the condition of your school." And as you can see here, most were adequate. We have over, about a quarter said it was either unacceptable or in-between unacceptable and acceptable, but majority, over 75% of people think that their school facility is acceptable or above. We also had some open-ended questions as well. The first one we had was, "List three things you like most about your child's school facility." Those responses ranged from, they liked the safety, they liked how it was clean, how it was well-maintained, they liked how there was a good learning environment, that it was very welcoming, that it was flexible and collaborative spaces. We also asked, "Three things you dislike about your facility." Those answers ranged from athletics, to it being old, outdated furniture, weird layout, and overcrowding. And there's a lot of other things. Quite honestly, there wasn't really a good trend, but that was some of the answers, some of the common answers we had. And lastly, the open-ended question we asked was, "Facility needs for your child's school." And answers included athletics, arts, and flexible spaces, among some other random things. Overall, these meetings were very productive and successful. Not only did we get very good information from our partners that will help us better understand the needs of the community and help us prioritize facility needs, it also helped build understanding from our partners. I've had many people comment at those meetings that had no clue about the scope of our facilities and what's involved, and so I think it really helped inform our partners about our facilities. I really appreciate the time of them coming out on a- I really appreciate the time of them coming out on a, sometimes a rainy night or a night to come, to come share their feedback. So, we really do appreciate their feedback. And really, really appreciate Jack and his team and for the, you know, twenty years that they've maintained and built a bunch of schools. So, it's, you know, kudos to him and his leadership for, for keeping the schools up to date. And with that, if I was under five minutes, Harry, we'll take any questions.
All right. Question or comments for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Manning and then Ms. Mackey, did you have one as well? Okay. And then Dr. Elkins Johnson, we'll just run down this way. Okay.
So, it's, it's interesting information, especially kind of on the age of our, our schools and sort of understanding what our community wants. I'm a little uncertain as to what do I do with this? I mean, it's, it's good information, but I know we have our ten-year facility, whatever the right name of that thing is.
Study.
I always say the wrong thing.
Study.
Study. And I know that we have a group that's kind of coming in to sort of look at, from a programmatic standpoint, maybe looking at some innovation and what that might look like for us as a district. But as far as this report tonight, I'm not really sure what, what this means or what to do with it.
It helps us of planning purposes. It helps us to understand that it's, as we build our strategic plan, we've talked about partners. You know, we're, we're wanting our partners to understand our facilities, but it's helping us understand that, you know, we may want to, want to try to do some different things in our facilities, but that might not be what some of our partners might want to do. They may have a, have an emphasis on a certain area that might not, we, we might not realize is that important for them. So, it just helps take a lot of information that we do yearly and annually in helping us plan to make sure we have the best facilities possible. And it's another layer of data to make sure that, hey, we've, you know, we've got some, some feedback from our public that, that, you know what, safety and security is very important in our, in our facilities and we want to make sure that you guys continue to do that. Or we want very flexible spaces. So, you know, let's, let's make sure as you, as you move forward in your planning that, that you consider that and it's, and it's, it's not done in a silo of just us doing that, but we are trying to partner with them.
Okay. So, I, I guess that's, that's helped for me because a, a lot of these things, when you have our list of things, right? I mean, they have been important to us, the safety. I mean, we see buildings like this, like our new Jackson Creek, our last few schools, certainly flexibility has been a big component of those. And programmatic use has been thought of. So, so maybe that's just, the takeaway is that we're sort of on track with where we're going, I guess.
The feedback was very consistent was in the ten-year facility study. So, where we thought we'd hear athletics, we heard athletics. We heard stuff about arts where we thought we'd hear about arts. We heard safety and security about our older schools. So, it tracks very closely what is, what's already there. So, you take this new information and compare it to the old information and you put, and you enhance your study.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, Harry took two and a half million dollars away from me to work on facilities earlier, so, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Ms. Mackey.
Question, I wasn't able to attend all of the strategic planning facilities sessions, but the ones I did, I, I was appreciative of the, the parents that came out and the community members. And I'm just putting on my school improvement council and parent hat for a moment. And it's important to me, particularly as I look at the survey results, to find out if we're maximizing our opportunities to ensure that we have parent input, community input. The survey, I'm not sure if there was a place for them to leave their contact information if they wanted to. I know one of the sessions you all were just overrun with parents asking you questions and things of that nature. So, although there was a survey link I know provided, I'm wondering if they will have ongoing opportunities, our parents and our community members, to get answers to questions and because these, these sessions were great, that they've concluded, to get answers to questions, to be able to provide feedback, particularly as we have, you know, other schools that we're planning for in the future. And it looked as if parents at these sessions were just happy for the opportunity to be able to share and to ask questions. And I'd love for us to be able to create that, an opportunity for that ongoing dialogue so that parents and community members have, feel that they have a way to have input with regard to facilities.
Sure. We're, we're actually in the process of putting all this on our website, the, the presentation that was shared, the results of the feedback and creating kind of a, just a, a better information page about our facilities. And we'll try to have more conversations like this as well as the ability to provide feedback. But at those meetings, if they were able to sign in, I got all their email addresses and have sent emails to them already. And so, but well, that's a good suggestion for us to continue with that open dialogue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
And my question was similar to what Mrs. Mackey mentioned. I wanted to know, I know we saw only two hundred students, I'm sorry, parents took the survey. And I was wondering, what could we have done, maybe with incentives to encourage more parents to participate, especially with us having over, what, twenty-eight thousand students and to only have two hundred parents to participate? What do you think we can do to encourage with incentives to get parents to get on board with this?
That's a, that's a great question. We can do some of the strategies that other departments have done, like Ms. Grant and others, to try to get maybe into the community more, maybe use, use of technology. Quite honestly, I was, I was, I didn't know how many people would show up. And so, I was, at some meetings, actually pleasantly surprised because I, it's just a trend in general, a lot of times with, with not coming out. But any suggestions that you have or anyone else has to help us get out there? But I know some others have been successful in doing that. But we'll continue to hit the road and hit SIC meetings or whatever we need to do to try to get more, more collaboration with our partners and parents.
And one thing I would suggest is maybe hitting some of the car rider lines, that you guys could go and pass out flyers during the car rider line, because that's a lot of our students are car riders, just to get the information out there.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Caution Parker, did you have anything? Okay. Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. I'm looking at the feedback data slide. Did each person that took the survey, did they indicate what school they went to?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And then on that, I'm looking at, rate the condition of your child's current school facility. Was it across the board? Was it consistent where parents didn't like one school or thought that it was unacceptable? Did the schools get similar ratings is what I'm, you know, each school? Were they consistent first, from school to school?
I would need to analyze that a little bit more. The, some of our older facilities may have gotten a more lower rating, but I'd need to do a little more analysis and I can get that answer to you. So, to get a, to, for each different school.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. So, thanks so much for your effort and, and for your team going out and, and spending the time to meet with the community. I know that that's been a reoccurring theme is that we, we as a district are, are reaching out to our community. I attended the Ridgeview Cluster, was a great opportunity to speak to various parents, understand what their concerns are. And that's really at the, what we do as board members, in addition to providing safety and education for our students, it's great to be able to be out with parents who have concerns and can put, have their genuine input on what, in this case, facilities look like. And, you know, just like we need to look at succession planning for our team, for, for our personnel in this district, we too need to look at what succession planning looks like for these facilities. You mentioned a five million dollar roof. Well, when we look at our eight percent budget, or the eight percent bonds that we would request, that essentially takes care of one roof. So, that we have some, as we have with the aging chart that you had, there are things that are going to, that I like, that we are forward-thinking as it relates to this, going out to community and getting input and, and taking a look at what the, the long-term horizon looks like in our district. So, I appreciate all your effort and work in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. All right. Let's see here. Next up is item thirteen point one, agenda items for January ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On our agenda for January the ninth, we have a signing of the ethical principles, special recognitions, student expulsions and appeals, student re-admission requests, as well as faculty focus. We'll have our traditional technology report and a legislative update, as well as a discipline report. We'll have the approval of policy revisions, KLGA, approval of the policy revision of IKADD, as well as the approval of the policy that we pulled out today, which is?
CHD.
CHD. Thank you so much. And we'll have proposals for additional policy revisions and a proposal for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any additions or add-ons that you'd like to see for the next agenda meeting or upcoming meetings?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
With regard to the legislative update, I'd recommend that we move that to a future, put those back on, to a future agenda. The legislative session in South Carolina will just be reconvening at that time. We will not, they will not have addressed the governor's vetoes yet and we won't know what the tax reform bill stands just yet. So, I recommend that we do it at a future meeting when we've got some action on those items, just to be respectful and responsible of everyone's time.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other agenda items? All right. At this point, we'll move into our second public participation. No one has signed up. However, if you'd like to address the board, please come forward now. All right. Seeing no one, we will now move into item number fifteen, our board and superintendent comments. Let me start with my right this time, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Columbia Gives and all those who partner with us to make us a, a great district and really help those in need help us out. Mr. Harden, thank you for your words this evening. I'd also like to thank Ms. Addison and Mr. Andrews for being involved parents. I'm glad that they came forward to speak to us. And finally, it was great to see our friends from Sand Lampert come and see those leaders in process. I can't wait to see what the future holds for them and what they contribute to our district in the future. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Mr. Shad.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Dr. Caution Parker.
Great reports, very informative, just, just good information. Kudos to Sand Lampert, those students are just outstanding. And congratulations on your retirement, our Ben Williams became the principal. And if I'm not mistaken, the name that was said earlier, isn't this Mr. Carter's last one?
It is indeed.
Two thumbs up. Jack, thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, ditto from what my colleague said. But I also want to recognize Mr. Nathan O'Neill. A lot of times, we don't give kudos to a lot of our faculty and staff members for all their hard work. Nathan O'Neill is one of those people that's quiet and in the back, but he works really well with our ESOL students. So, Mr. O'Neill, thank you for all that you do and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Ms. Mackey.
Just thanking the people who are still in the room at this late hour. I have, and I always say that, and the reason that I do is because I've won a lot of hats in my forty-ish years on this earth. And so, I appreciate a lot of what goes on in the background so that people in the foreground can do their job, because I've won a lot of hats for the people in the background. And just wanted to comment that I went to Dent Middle School last week and was blessed to be able to be with students with a book in my hand, reading. That is my favorite thing to do is to engage with our students. And the book, Wonder, is what we shared and they discussed the precepts of, of the different chapters of the book. And one of the precepts that they were discussing as, as I went to visit the class that day was, when given the choice between being right or being kind, choose kind. And I'm just thankful for a lot of the kindness that trickles down to our students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manning. Just a little slow on them, getting a little tired here.
That's all right. I jumped anyways. Jack, you know, thank you for your service. I mean, you, we have great folks, but you would truly be missed. You've done a lot for this district and been a key component of a lot of building, a, a big time of growth. And so, we appreciate your service, not only to us, but your former military service as well. And so, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. Will had to like grow a handle mustache or something to try to backfill and be recognized. I also had the opportunity to read the book to Dent Middle School, it was a great opportunity. You know, I've never read to middle school students that way before. It was really a neat opportunity to read to middle school students and they, they obviously enjoyed it very much. And I think the book was incredible. If you get a chance, I recommend that you read the book, Wonder. It really was amazing. And as a sci-fi geek, I loved all the references to Star Wars and all the other kind of sci-fi components of that. Also, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I hope everybody enjoys a little bit of a break to spend time with family and friends and, and kind of recharge the batteries so you can come back energized into the new year. And thank you again for letting me be a part of the Richland Two family and look forward to seeing you all in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first start off by saying congratulations to Blythewood and Spring Valley High Schools. Starting in the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year, they will begin implementing the AP Cornerstone Diploma Program. This College Brown program helps students sharpen their independent research, collaboration and communication skills. Students compete, complete two advanced placement courses, AP Seminar as well as AP Research. Richland Two now has three schools, including Ridgeview High School, offering this rigorous, widely-recognized diploma program. The Military Child Education Coalition in Richland Two are presenting a parent education seminar at Dent Middle School on Thursday, December the fourteenth at six P.M. All interested Richland Two parents are invited to attend sessions in, in building resilience during deployment and transitioning with a student with exceptional needs. Also like to take the opportunity to recognize any of our teachers and aspiring administrators that are still here Saturday, this evening, that are part of our TAP program. If you would, if you would wave your hand or stand up so that, wow. Thank you for your commitment to being a part of the pipeline or the pathway that leads to leadership here in the district. We appreciate you sticking it out with us. Typically, we don't go this long, but I know it's part of your assignment. And Mr. Price, Dr. James Ann Shealy and Dr. Marshall Anne Franklin, I'm sure will grade you accordingly for your participation. So, appreciate you guys sticking with us. There are two hot holiday basketball events are happening this month in Richland Two. Check out the Bojangles Bash at Ridgeview High School this Thursday through Friday, as well as the Chick-fil-A Classic at Richland Northeast High School that gets underway on December the twentieth, which is my birthday. So, we'll have a red velvet cake at halftime. No, I'm, I'm just messing around. December twentieth till the twenty-third. For some people that, let me pause for a second, because we've had an opportunity to recognize Jack, but I did have a few words to put together, that was put together that I want to share on behalf of the superintendent's office as well as the executive staff. For some people, they're either like working so much or retiring so much that they, they complete the process more than once. That's the case with our chief operations officer, Jack. Tell him no the first time, Carter. Since tonight, since tonight is his last board meeting, we would be remiss if we didn't publicly thank him for his service to our district, even though his response to questions about public recognition was his trademark answer, no. After dedicating thirty years to our country, Jack first retired as a colonel from the United States Army. He came to Richland Two from Fort Jackson in September of nineteen ninety-nine. He has led our operations division during a time of tremendous growth, overseeing the construction of numerous new schools, as well as maintenance, school safety, transportation and food service. A proud veteran and, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with this word, Clem, Clemson. It's hard to say that word. A proud veteran and Clemson graduate, Jack has consistently displayed his loyalty and dedication to the Richland Two family. Even though his official time as Richland Two employee ends in a few weeks, I know he will continue to be one of our biggest supporters as well as we will be one of his biggest. Please join me in thanking Mr. Carter for being a devoted keeper of the Richland Two family.
Merry Christmas to all. You know, it's interesting, I have down here, when you have a Linda and you have a Carter in this, on the same page, it kind of, I don't know if that's my, kind of that Freudian slip for my crush on Wonder Woman. Woman back in the day. But Linda Hall, we, we wish you a great retirement. And Colonel Carter, we appreciate all you've done for this district. Thank you so much. I'll keep my mind brief. At this time, we will, I will ask for a motion to move to executive session number two.
Chair, I recommend... I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I recommend recessed public session and convene the executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student expulsions, student appeals, admission requests into the adult education program, employment recommendations, releases and in-district transfers.
Thank you. Motion made by Dr. Caution Parker. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. With no discussion, we'll take a vote. Hand vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. You guys have a Merry Christmas.